Councillor Powers. Here, Councillor Rizzo. Here, Councillor Serino.
Here.
Here, Councillor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Councillor Visconti.
Here.
Here, Councillor Zambudo. Absent, and Council President Keith.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. First item on tonight's agenda, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of January 9th.
All in favor? Sorted.
Calendar item number three, 2023 City Council Subcommittee Assignments.
Place some file.
Calendar item number four, that Regional Vocational School Committeeman Anthony Cagiano will appear before the Revere City Council to discuss the work currently being done at the Revere Society for Cultural and Historical Preservation, as well as other proposed projects utilizing resources stemming from the vocational school in Wakefield.
Mr. Cagiano.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council.
Hang on, Councillor Rizzo.
Yeah, no, this was my motion. I thought you would call on me just to...
I apologize, Councillor Rizzo, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. You know, the reason that I submitted this motion is that I'm not sure if all of my colleagues here in the City Council know what work and time and effort that our newly-elected Regional School Committee Man Anthony Cagiano has been putting in, but, you know, he has been doing a tremendous job. And as you all know, there are many, many students from Revere that attend the Regional Vocational School, many more that want to attend the Regional Vocational School but can't get in due to seat constraints. So, you know, it is a big part of our city, you know, we know they're building a new high school, and so I thought it would be important just for us to get updated with regards to what's going on with the Regional Vocational School Department. So, thank you very much, Anthony, for attending.
Thank you. Chris, I just want to give you an update on the projects that Northeast Metro Tech is being conducted in the city of Revere. I met with Bob Upton about a year and a half ago, and went superintendent to Barry, and what just decided was we're going to update the wiring system to modern standard electrical system up to code compliance, which consists of carbon tubing, lights and exit signs, smoke detectors, replacing vamps from 200 to 400, and new wiring for the air conditioning and heating system. Once this is accomplished, we should be able to qualify for some National Grid programs to make the building more energy efficient. Since this started this past September, the project has expanded. Plumbing will be coming in to remodeling one of the bathrooms, carpentry is coming in to replace some of the flooring in the bathrooms, and HVAC will be coming in for climate controls throughout the whole building. This has been a great project for the students, as well as a cost savings for the city of Revere. Also, we'll be doing the new dugouts, like we talked about, sometime this year. And in closing, Northeast Metro Tech, for the very first time, has approved a plumbing elective that will be taught at Revere High. Both superintendents have met and picked out a location at Revere High, and the curriculum is currently being established now, and hopefully it will be starting sometime this coming fall. Thank you.
That's fantastic. Thank you. Any councils? Councillor Morbido.
Mr. Cagiano, I just want to thank you for coming up here and clarifying that. I've always liked the concept of giving back to the community. So, here are these kids working for learning a trade, and they're given back to the community, and they learn at a young age. And it helps us as a city to save in costs, too. So, it's a great working relationship, so I'd like to see more of that in the future as well.
Thank you. Like I said, this project is still ongoing. We might be adding more to it, but right now, this is what's on the agenda. We just started with the electrical, now we're in plumbing, carpentry. We have other ideas we might do, but I'd rather not announce them right now because nothing has been approved yet.
Thank you, Councillor... Councillor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, and thank you for that presentation, Anthony. I just have a couple of quick questions. I won't keep you, you know, here too, too long, but I'm just curious, you know, if you could just give us an idea of how many seats the city of Revere has at the vocational school, and, you know, what percentage, if you happen to know that, that Revere has in terms of students that occupy the vote, and if you anticipate any more seats coming our way for people that are looking for it, and how many people might be on the waiting list waiting to get in there?
As far as today, up to date now, we've had the most students we've ever got accepted. We have 75. This year, we got 47 already graduating. So, we've got, we're occupying about 20%, 21%. With the new school, with another 250, 300, we might get 20% more. But the problem is, is we have too many applications. We're going on probably another, it's going to go over 200 again. So, we're only filling up to probably 40%. So, this is what we talked about, where we have an elective, you know, with plumbing, but this is at the beginning, but I'd like to see at some point full Chapter 74 programs out of Revere. But this is a step in the right direction. At least this way, if we can get it at some point, Chapter 74, we can probably reduce the waiting list by about 50%. And the kids could be coming here. The Volk will come in and teach the trade, and then Revere will do the academics.
Thank you very much, Anthony. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councillor Silvestri.
I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Cagiano, for coming up. It's amazing program that you're running, not only does it give them real-world experience working on a job site such as the Historical Society, but having the plumbing trade come to Revere High is exciting news, and hopefully maybe in the future, we can expand on those. But again, thank you for coming up and sharing the information with us, and please give a big thanks to the students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for coming up, even though I missed part of your presentation.
Okay.
I did hear a good part of it, and the good part was the plumbing issue at the high school. I think it's wonderful.
It's only an elective, you know, and hopefully we'll be able to expand from there, but we've got to take steps, you know, into that direction.
You're talking to a guy...
I know.
...who went to high school before the Voces were in vogue, and we had a course at East Boston High called Techniques of Industry, and it taught everything that the Volk teaches. And it was usually for troubled kids that, you know...
Right.
...needed a better direction. And that's why I'm a big fan of the Volk, but I'm also a big fan of anything we can do here to help kids go into trades.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Cagiano, I just want to also extend my thanks to you and all the work that you've done. I know we've had multiple conversations throughout the year last year, and it's great to see a very active school committee man that represents Revere and does what he can do for our students. So, thank you again for the work that you continue to do.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Cagiano, for coming up here. I look forward to seeing the, we said, once we can get that concrete poured...
Right.
...see some beautiful dugouts.
I'm sure we'll be talking.
It'll be wonderful. All right? Thank you.
Take care.
Thanks for your time.
Public hearings, calendar item number five. Hearing called as ordered on an ordinance further amending an ordinance relative to meeting times of governmental bodies. Section 1, 2.03.050E, open meetings of the revised ordinances of the city of Revere is hereby amended by ending the first sentence after the word "Sunday" and deleting the words "in matters deemed necessary by the presiding officer of the following: Board of Health, City Council Committee of the Whole and subcommittees, Conservation Commission, Commission on Disabilities, Human Rights Commission, Planning Board, Traffic Commission, zoning Board of Appeals," and inserting in place thereof the following: "The following governmental body shall be exempt from the subsection School Committee, License Commission, and Council on Elder Affairs."
Speaking of public hearing, we'd like to open it up to any proponents that wish to come up and speak. Any proponents hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any city councilors?
Councillor Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, just for clarification, this was a housekeeping item. Since we passed the public meetings times ordinance to require public bodies meet beginning at 5:00 PM, no earlier than 5:00 PM, we have added the Public Art Commission and the housing, the Affordable Housing Trust Committee. So, basically what this does is this just clarifies which bodies are exempt. When we discussed this in 2020, the School Committee, the License Commission, and the Council on Elder Affairs were prominently excluded, and every other committee was named. This just does the opposite and names the ones that are exempt. So, it's just a housekeeping item.
Appreciate the clarification. Hearing and seeing no one at the councils, this is going to be referred to Legislative Affairs. All in favor?
Sighted.
Calendar item number six, hearing called as ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to install a line of underground conduits across Thornton Street from existing pole number 1920-1 to 60 Shirley Avenue.
Again, this is a public hearing, so we're going to open it up to proponents. Any proponents? Feel free to come up to the microphone. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Moses Okukuru. I'm here on behalf of National Grid Electric Side. My address is 170 Metford Street in Malden. For this petition, National Grid is requesting to install approximately 50 feet of two 4-inch conduit across Thornton Road towards Shirley Ave. to provide them with electric service. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents in the audience wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents in the audience wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any councilors? Councillor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I met with Moses at the location, and I know in the past, we've made some comments about not knowing exactly what was happening. So, he reached out to me, and I met him down there, and it's fine, he has, they put in a new pole at 60 Thornton, 60 Shirley Ave., and the new pole on Thornton Street, this is going to run underground to feed the building, so have no objections to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Any other councilors? Okay. Roll call, vote.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested by National Grid? Councillor Cagliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Nowosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith.
Yes.
Yes, the petition has been granted. Next on the agenda is executive session.
Mr. President, before we take a vote to go into executive session, I just, well, this was, it's a motion that I submitted back in August, but I just wanted to, and I see the city solicitor here, so I just wanted to mention that these two items that are on the calendar tonight, being requested to go to executive session, they're really, the two items here have not really addressed the issues that I asked about. I did not ask about the chief's reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health. That's nowhere in my motion. I specifically was looking for assessment center results that were provided but completely redacted. I also asked for the man to appear to discuss what he knew or didn't know about allegations of misconduct, and what actions of financial settlements have been made as a result of these allegations. And lastly, I asked for an accounting of all public funds spent to settle claims as a result of these claims, as well as settlements and disciplinary action taken against members of the Revere Police Department, including suspensions and terminations of reasons for them. I asked for this on August 22nd, and here we are on January 23rd. So, I don't know what specifically, I don't have anything to really ask about the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health of the chief. That's not the purpose of my motion. But I do have serious concerns about the ongoing activities in the Revere Police Department. I want to know, you know, obviously what I had just talked about. I don't know if everyone else in the City Council is aware of some of the things, some of the settlements that I believe have been made but have not been confirmed, some of ongoing settlements, some of ongoing allegations, some of ongoing investigations, and I think these are things that we as a City Council have to address. You know, I mean, you know, they're not pleasant. I'm not doing this. This is not a political move. This is, you know, trying to get an understanding of where we're going with respect to our public safety here in the city. And, you know, I mean, obviously like anything else, whether it's the mayor, whether it's the chief of police, whether it's the fire chief, everything starts at the top, and we should know what's going on, and how that's impacting morale, and how that's impacting our rank-and-file police officers that we also represent. So, you know, I had some questions about that, and so you want to go into executive session, I'll ask the questions, but I'm not sure how appropriate going into executive session is when you're talking about making settlements with public funds. I mean, do our taxpayers not need to know what type of settlements are being made, what officers are getting paid because of either allegations or agreements that the city makes? You know, it seems very unfair to me, it seems very unfair to me, that we would withhold this information from the people that we represent, from the people that vote for us. These are the voters of our community, and we have to go into executive session and kind of in secrecy talk about what settlements and what ongoing investigations.
Point of information.
Yeah, sure.
Councillor Morbido.
I think the point of executive session is information is very sensitive, and there could be pending legal action, and that's the reason why we go into executive session. We've done it multiple times in the Ambrosino administration, the Rizzo administration, the Arigo administration. I think you can ask all your questions in executive session.
But what I'm saying is there's no ongoing investigations with some of these. They're just financial settlements that I ask for.
I don't know, but we can ask.
Right, which is what I'm trying to do.
If I can, and again, I'm not speaking, I don't know if some of the questions are directed towards me, I know you were kind of directing to the whole, but I guess we should probably see if those three specific questions that you would ask, if we can get those answered tonight. If we can't, then obviously then this is going to continue to, you know, bother you, and I'm sure that there's going to be more conversation, top pieces about it. And I certainly agree, you know, if it's public record, it should be public record, but some of these things, I could tell you some of the things, I have been informed on some of the stuff that's happened with the police department, whether it was, you know, the mayor bringing me into his office, or the chief calling me himself, or patrolmen and police officers talking to me. So, I have, I don't know all of them, and the certain things that, quite frankly, I'm not sure I really, it's really up to me to be part of, but I think that we'll get some good information tonight, and then we can kind of see where we have to move forward with it. So, I guess that, again, I was a little fuzzy about the language as well, but I think it's more of a legal, legal language to, if we're going to talk about someone, it can be a character, or it could be interpreted as talking about their character, or their health, both physical and mental, and et cetera. So, it was a weird word verbiage, but I think it was more, I think it was more legal lingo than anything else, because I certainly don't think that we're going to be talking much about that. But we might as well do this, we have been talking about this for quite some time, and get to what we want to know, and get to what we should know, and then see where we have to go from there. Sounds good, Mr. Rizzo?
Sure. You know, if you wanted to put this behind the doors here and we'll talk about it, let's do it. I just want to talk about...
There's certain things I don't even feel comfortable about being, you know, there's a lot of things, I could tell you, some of the stuff I've heard, a lot of it is not meant for any public council, none of it. And there's some that certainly should be. So, I think that I'd rather be here on the side of caution to make sure that we're not putting ourselves out there into some improprieties.
Mr. President, if I could...
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So, number one, the motion that was passed by the City Council asked that I appear before the City Council in executive session. So, you know, I find it interesting that now we want to talk about this publicly, but that was the motion that was presented, and I think that was the understanding that we all had, my teams here, to be able to talk on it. But if we would like to talk about it publicly, I'm happy to do that, and one, so a couple things. One is the settlements that have been made, which is something that I believe has been presented to all of you, or we have it available to everyone. There are six settlements that have been made since 2017, and I do want to make sure that everybody keeps in mind the fact that at least three or, well, actually five of the six were related to incidents under Chief Cafarelli. And so, and the most expensive one, which was $175,000 Lynn Rimboli settlement, was due to the harassment that was taking place under Chief Cafarelli. So, happy to go into detail about these. Fortunately for us, we do have insurance, and our insurance company covered that $175,000 settlement for the harassment that Lynn Rimboli endured under Chief Cafarelli, and that was not direct taxpayer money, but that was the largest of the six. And happy to go into any, you know, further detail, there was one that was actually made for no money, there was one that was made for, I believe, $500, and a couple of other that we can go in. And actually, one of them was made with Joe Cafarelli as well, who, at the time of his, him being relieved, was informed that he would be under, you know, the potential of discipline, including up, and, you know, including potentially termination because of an incident that involved Chief Callahan that he did not, you know, tell me about or inform me in proper time. He was the chief at the time. And, you know, obviously, we know, we want to make sure that, and I'm sure any former mayor would agree, that you want a chief that's going to be telling you what's happening immediately. So, happy to go into those. The other thing that I'll say, and I think it's important to call out, was this kind of sense that things may not be going well for the men and women of the department. I am proud to say that we've come to at least a handshake agreement with our Patrol Officers Union, and I think that's a sign of the work that we're willing to do. We've always been willing to work with everyone to make sure that the police fight doesn't become a political football, and that is exactly what we're seeing tonight. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, well, thank you, and Councillor Rizzo, if you'd like a quick retort, but I do...
Yeah, yeah, I would, because, you know, he was willing to publicly discuss some of this, so I just have some questions. So, Chief Cafarelli was, so Chief Cafarelli never came to you with a complaint about the current chief then? He never came to you with a complaint about that?
So, I have the letter that I presented to Chief Cafarelli, which, no, 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 let's talk about it.
No, I appreciate that, but I...
Everyone should know, everyone should know the situation...
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
...that, I believe it was 11 months after...
Mr. President, roll call for executive session.
Can you just, Mr. Mayor, can you just let me say one statement, please?
Failure to report. You provided me a letter dated April 12th, 2017...
I second the motion, executive session.
Regarding an allegation that was made and presented to him when we found out and investigated it, was presented to him on May 30th, 2016.
Mr. President, there's a roll call on the table.
He did not tell me until April 12th, 2017.
Thank you.
He failed to notify me.
And you said, and you said that it was credible. You said that they complained. Respect the rules of order.
Mr. President, it's a roll call, please.
Okay. Mr. President, we're going to go into executive session. No one seems to care to get to the bottom of it. So, we'll just play this game, play this game. Okay.
Okay.
Point of order, Mr. President.
I would love to. Enough.
Gentlemen, please.
Your two senior female officers have something going on right now, don't they?
Gentlemen, gentlemen. Please, please, please. Okay, we're going to discuss this, we can get it as vibratious as we'd like in executive session, but I'm telling you right now, the rest of tonight, if it's not on the agenda, we're not talking about it, okay? Simple as that. We're not going to ask questions on relative to the agenda. We're going to go to executive session. Madam Clerk, shall I read the statement or the reason for executive session? On the purpose one of the open meeting law, the City Council will enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the reputation, character, physical condition, and or mental health of Police Chief David Callahan, and on the purpose three of the open meeting law, to discuss the city's litigation position in the case of Griffin v. Massachusetts Civil Service Commission et al. Shall I read the rest? Okay. State that the City Council will reconvene in open session at the conclusion of the executive session. Madam Clerk, would you request a roll to enter into executive session? At that point, I would have to ask that anyone that's not related to this matter would have to leave the chambers until we resume.
Shall the City Council enter into executive session? Councillor Cagliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Nowosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rizzo.
No.
No, Councillor Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith.
Yes.
Yes, the City Council shall now enter into executive session.[1559.41]
Calendar item number nine, communication from the city council regarding the board of health's approval of the city's regulations on biosafety and the use of regulated biological agents.
Public Aaron, no, pardon me, just communications, this is going to be placed on file, did everyone get a chance to read that? Great, place them file.
Calendar item number 10, communication from the city's CFO relative to the long-range financial planning for the city.
Okay, is Richard Viskey coming up? All right.
Mr. President, just, um.
Mr. Mayor.
Say a couple of words, just in the, as we, as we discussed at the last council meeting, I think in the spirit of collaboration and working with the council and seeing the high school project for which, what it is, which is a significant investment in our city's future. It will require all of us to roll up our sleeves and work together and the CFO will, will walk through a relatively high level kind of presentation on, on financial forecasting and what the, the future of the city holds and kind of where we're at. But I would, I would just make the call that, you know, we're all going to have to work together on this and this is work and these are conversations that are not just going to happen after we move to the next stage of getting the high school moved along in the process. I will say that I'm, I'm confident and I'm energized by the fact that if there is one thing that we all agree on and we've all, I've heard it from everyone, every, everybody's mouth, that we want to build a new high school. And so it's just a matter of, again, working together, collaborating and making sure that we have the right pieces in place to make that happen. With that, I'll turn it over to our chief financial officer.
Ms. President, just before he comes up, no, no, Mr. Viskey, you can come on up, you know, that's fine, I just have a question because, in fact, I had asked this question, I believe, the last time, at our last meeting when we were discussing the high school. If the motion or the decision by the city council to go into the Ways and Means Subcommittee so we could have an extended period of time where we could ask questions, and I think at that time the clerk said that it was, so are we going to, can we plan on going to a Subcommittee meeting? I know I'm not chairman of Ways and Means anymore, but.
Counselor Rizzo, this is going to be, after tonight, moving forward, this will be fully referred to Ways and Means, correct? It was a scheduling and there wasn't a Ways and Means opportunity today, they were very much wanting to get some more information from us, I thought it was a good opportunity, but this is going to Ways and Means moving forward.
Okay, only because, you know, over time, I've just developed a lot of questions that I would like to ask Rich and, and, you know, I'm sure you either have the answers or be able to get the answers, so, you know, but I just wanted to have that opportunity where we're spending hundreds of millions of dollars that, you know, we could spend a little time on it, you know, and I think we had all agreed to that, so I'm glad that's still going forward, thank you, Ms. President.
Yeah, sure, and Counselor Rizzo, just, I've approached this as long-range financial planning presentation, obviously, much of it ties into the ultimate funding of the high school, but what I was going to try to do tonight is give an overview of just long-range financial planning, some of the tools we may have to get to the goal line, so to speak, with this project, and many of them may not be very popular with everybody, but I felt like I had to go through the laundry list of everything and get the appetite of what may or may not be able to be done, so that was my approach here, not so much just high school-centric, but just long-range planning. So, thank you, Counselor, I think Ashley's going to assist me for the people on TV. So, I just put together a PowerPoint presentation, it's 20 slides, I'm hoping to get through them within a half hour, maybe a minute and a half a slide here, hopefully, I can answer questions at the end, maybe better to kind of wait so I can buzz through this, but if anyone really has a question they need to ask, just start me, but. So, long-range financial planning, what is it? It's the process of budgeting and for operations and growth and the renewal for buildings, infrastructure and land. It's characterized by uncertain long-term projections, resource management, and tapping a wide range of expertise that require both operational and financial experience. So, what's the difference, next slide, Ashley, what's the difference between budgeting and long-range planning? Well, the budget is for the here and now, we typically pass a budget every year, that goes from fiscal year to fiscal year, the long-range financial plan isn't necessarily the annual budget, but just trying to come up with some strategies to make sure that we're solvent year over year. This presentation will focus on what the organization may be able to do to get where we want to get, which is ultimately a building of a new high school. Next slide is, so how can we build financial capacity to construct a new high school, begins with long-range planning strategy. So, I broke it into two, revenues and income that we can potentially realize, and looking at expenditures and expenses that we could possibly save money on or come up with other ideas to create this capacity. Next slide. So, most people talk about the new growth in the city through property tax revenue, and just to be clear, we tax right now at the levy limit. We do not have the capacity to tax any more than is allowed by the Commonwealth, so a lot of people think that we're just going to go out, build a high school and put it on the backs of all the taxpayers, well, we couldn't do that even if we wanted to. There are certain communities that actually have excess capacity that could achieve that just through taxation, we are not one of them, we are at the levy limit, so we have our challenges here to try to create that capacity to pay this debt service, so. For those who don't know what new growth is, it's basically any new development that's happened over the fiscal year that we wouldn't tax, but we apply last year's tax rate to the value of that new growth, it gives us additional capacity to tax on that new development, that's why it's very important and part of this conversation is how this new development will allow us to potentially build this high school the way we want it, so. Most people point to the H Y M development, I think most of us have heard the fact that it could generate upwards of $46 million in new growth, which is great, but that new growth is going to take 20 years and our debt service will come into effect much sooner, so matching those revenue streams with these expenses is really going to be the challenging part of this, so. Other large developments obviously will help as well, but as of the last forecast that I received from the Board of Assessors, it looks like from fiscal years '24 to '29, we can estimate about $10 million in new growth at H Y M, another $10 million the next six years, upwards of $12.5 million from fiscal year '36 to '41, and then maybe another $10 million from '42 to '47. Our debt payments are going to start rapidly increasing with the maximum debt payment will probably come in around 2028, so that's the challenge. Next slide. So, what are the different ways we can approach this? Well, a lot of communities, not typically cities, will do a debt exclusion. Debt exclusion is a vote of the residents of the city that would have to agree that they're going to allow us to raise debt over two and a half, prop two and a half for a specific debt service cost, which would be the high school. But as I said in the last slide, our tax levy limit is $107,656,370. We are taxing $107,623,293 this year, it's part of balance in the budget. Everyone on the council is aware of that, they passed the budget, they got these numbers, but for those watching, just to give them an idea, we only have capacity to raise $33,000 in additional taxes, which is essentially impossible because if we raised the rate a penny, we would go over $33,000, so we are right at the limit. Just for discussion purposes, though, if the residents did vote favorably for any kind of debt exclusion vote, for every million dollars that we would have to exclude in debt service, it would average about $47 per household. So, if you talk, talk $10 million, you can call it $470, et cetera, et cetera, but just for illustrative purposes, one way of achieving the goal of creating capacity to pay for the school would be bring it to the voters, see if they want to vote to increase their taxes to pay for the high school. I don't think many people want that, but I have to talk about it, so. Next slide, please. There's another tool out there, it's called the Community Preservation Act, I'm not sure how many people know about the Community Preservation Act, but it's a state law that allows for a surcharge, an override, so to speak, of no more than 3% of local property taxes. But the nice part of a Community Preservation Act is there is a Community Preservation Trust Fund held by the state for fees they collect in real estate transactions, and they will match the CPA surcharge with matching funds, last year in the Commonwealth, it was 38%. So, just to put that in perspective, if the city decided they wanted to try to pass the Community Preservation Act, which also requires a vote of the city residents, they could raise for every 1%, about a million dollars, goes with up to 3%, would be 3 million, and the state would have matched 408,000 of that million. So, simply put, maximum 3 million, match the boat, one and a half million, that would create 4.5 million dollars of funding that could be used for things such as open space, outdoor recreation, historic preservation. Just some facts about the CPA, there's 194 cities and towns that have adopted it, so over half the cities and towns in the Commonwealth have adopted the CPA. It's raised $3.2 billion since its inception, it's preserved 34,000 acres of open space, it's created 3,300 outdoor recreation projects, including ballparks, baseball fields, trails, et cetera, it's created 10,000 units of new housing, it's assisted and supported 16,000 additional units of housing, and it's done about $6,700 worth of historical preservation projects. We can't really fund all of these programs within our general fund, the reason why I bring this up is because there is a mechanism to raise funds to fund these types of projects, would, would give us some capacity on taxing, so thought it was important to at least put that in front of the council as an option. Next slide, please. Our budget's driven heavily by not so much federal aid, but state aid, but we do have some key city residents and officials, we do have Congresswoman Catherine Clark, who's the Democratic Whip, number two in the Democratic House of Representatives. We have the mayor, who is president of the Mass Mayors Associations this year, Dr. Kelly is also the president of the Mass Association of School Superintendents, Stacy Rizzo is the president of the Mass Association of School Committees, so. We definitely need some advocacy about getting funding to help with this, and what types of funding can we seek? Well, I assume we can go for environmental funding, energy efficiency, sustainability, infrastructure, roadways, you know, maybe build a municipal garages, there's a plethora of things I think that we got to think about as we think about this project and how our, our local and state federal delegates can help us with that. Next slide. So, state aid, Chapter 70 and the Student Opportunity Act, which is funded within that Chapter 70, is the majority of our state aid. Year over year, I estimate 3.5% increases in that local aid. Is that number going to be more or less this year, or time will tell? But just to give the public and the council an idea on how we use that state aid, Chapter 70 for the schools, we do a cost sharing calculation called the Schedule 19. We take city costs that would reduce the appropriation that we assume through our administration and support staff, retirement costs, health insurance costs, and everything that the city bears those expenses, we're able to reduce that from the Schedule 19. Then we have to add back in excluded school costs that we pick up, like student transportation, which was a big one this year, you know, security, the, the police that work at the schools, crossing guards, all that stuff, we net all that out and we come up with our year-to-year appropriation. We're going to have to certainly forecast those Schedule 19 costs over many years to find out how that affects the overall budget. Next slide, please. One big part of our balance in the budget is local receipts, I feel like we have to do a deep dive into our schedules of our fees and fines, licensing permits, et cetera. Most of the POMs have told me it's been upwards of 20 years plus since anyone's even looked at some of these fees, as you know, some of the development going on in the city, it may be a good time to make sure we're keeping up with our peers on what we're charging. And again, I know these are all unpopular type of decisions, but these are the types of recurring revenues, if we tweak them, it would help create some capacity, so I think building permits in particular would be key to look at. We also know there's local options taxes in the city, we charge the maximum local option tax right now for rooms, which is 6%, we charge the maximum we can charge for males, which is 3/4 of 1%. Those fees are collected by the Commonwealth and then redistributed to us through the cherry sheets, so we get that money in. The one local options tax that we don't really take advantage of is the cannabis tax, there is local options up to 3% on that, and there's also the ability to assess impact fees on those. I know that was voted down at this council once upon a time, but I think there's a point we take a look at it. Also have on the S E L of assets, that's just one-time revenues that could be sold and we can put those dollars into our stabilization account for future costs, but. Oh, thank you for the correction, it was voted down. I, I, I'm not going to do a deep dive into it, but. That was my understanding as well, but. Well, we can deep dive into that, again, I'm just here to list options that we have, so I'm not, I'm not trying to debate. I think it's worth noting in the next slide, please, is these are some of our communities surrounding us that do have the local options tax and impact fees, and Salem is, I guess they're the gold standard here, they've raised $3.2 million in these fees that go directly to expenses, operational expenses of their city, we've got Brookline, Arlington, Melrose, Lynn, Chelsea, I list them out. Rové has not realized a dollar of this revenue from this local options tax, I know that there is one facility that has been talked about opening since I've been here, it's been five years, it's not open, so I'm not sure where that stands, but I think it's a source of dedicated revenue that could be put into a stabilization account to help fund this high school as well, whether people like that idea or not, again, another option that needs to be brought forth. Next slide, please. They just keep getting worse, fellas, I'm sorry, but I got to tell you. So, we have an enterprise fund for water and sewer, our revenues that we collect from water and sewer pay for all the expenses of that, the direct costs, the indirect costs, the bond services for all the infrastructure going on in the city, so that is where maximizing the way you run an enterprise fund. We do have a solid waste enterprise fund, and for those who don't know, it costs nearly $4 million a year to pick up the trash in the city. We generate about $400,000 worth of revenue from selling extra barrels to violations that occur when people aren't disposing their trash properly, when they buy stickers for different types of bulky Anna pickups, et cetera. What's that mean? That means this general fund subsidizes the trash by $3.6 million. Now, any fees that we could put on the disposal of trash or recycling, every dollar we would be able to generate from there would be a direct dollar savings to the general fund. I put on there a non-resident monthly trash fee because there was a community I worked in that had budget problems, they instituted a non-resident monthly trash fee, generated $700,000 a year, that was about 15, 17 years ago. Again, I don't know what the appetite is for any of this stuff, but. Again, I don't know what the appetite is for any of this stuff, but we do want to talk about what our options are, and subsidizing trash with general fund dollars certainly allows us not to do some of the things that we're going to try to do with the high school. Next slide. So other funding sources, we did create, council approved, the High School Stabilization Trust Fund in November '22. We just established the fund. We haven't established any policies on what kind of money goes in there. So I think now's the time to start thinking about what types of revenues we can get in there to help deblunt that spike of the debt service once it comes on board. Percentage of free cash, maybe a percentage of building permits of new development, percentage of income generated from local options taxes, some sales of assets. There's, the law has been expanded to allow dedicated revenue streams into these types of stabilization accounts. So I think that's a topic that this body may want to consider. We also have Opera Funds. The city and school both received a pretty good share of Opera Funds, 30 million on the city side, I think about 27 million on the school side. I think we have a conversation about how those funds could help with this project. So essentially, that's the revenue portion of the presentation. Those are ideas that I think got to be considered in coming up with revenue sources to create capacity. Now we're going to look at the expense side. So most logically, we had a $500 million price tag put before the council, and we all know what happened then. It was spoken by one of the counselors, Councilor Beatro, I believe, that said, you know, $440 million would be a lot more reasonable. So I use that figure because it seemed relevant. You, you made the, you made the point. So what's that do? Well, that saves us $3 million a year, brings $22 million worth of debt service down to $19 million of debt service a year. Now, I don't know that 440 is the right number or can be brought down even lower, but I believe they just raised the reimbursement rate on construction to about $396 a square foot. Problem is, our school looks like it's going to cost about $900 to $1,000 a square foot. Why is that? Well, I can't answer that, but I think we have to find out why our school is so expensive, and if that is benchmarked with all the new schools. They're building a vocational school, as you know. They're building schools in different communities. I'd be curious to know what we can do to reduce costs at any point we could, just so it becomes more affordable. So I also think a very important part of this is the ability to maybe use a portion of this wonderland to generate some private development, which will generate some tax dollars. There's been a few people that talked about, what about the opportunity to put in a municipal garage on that site to help for parking for the high school and to generate some revenue for expansion over there. Again, all ideas that I think need to be teased out as a way to tackle this very expensive project that we all say we want to build, but we got to make some tough decisions. So, next slide. All right. Fixed costs, they're pretty much 40% of the budget. When I say fixed costs, really three things: health insurance, pension liability, debt service. So I'll start with the health insurance. This body knows that we've entertained the idea of trying to look at the GIC as a, as a way to save money. I've done calculations with our health insurance trust advisors, and there's potential to save upwards of $5 million a year if we consider going into the State's Group Insurance Commission. That would require a vote of this body, the city council ought for us to allow for the option of that. It doesn't mean that we would definitely go to that. It would just give us the ability to bargain with the Public Employee Commission, the PEC, on the benefits of going into health insurance. That could bring a cost savings. Our health insurance budget's over $20 million a year. We have a very rich, very good plan. I think everybody's aware of that. It's kind of the sacred cow. But again, we do have opportunities to save money there if we want to make these tough decisions. So it's on the, it's, it's, it's on the, it's on the table, so to speak. Next slide. Pension obligation. Right now, the city is 63.5% funded in its pension obligation. We have $193 million of assets. We have $111 million of unfunded liability. We work with our actuaries at the state parac, and our actuary report shows that we should be fully funded by 2033. Again, that doesn't consider the fiscal year that just went by, that the market didn't do too well, but they do have smoothing techniques that only take a fifth of that over five years, so it's not very spiky. But we will probably see that we will be a little less than 63.5% once the dust settles there. But the good news is that if we are funded by 2033, it would free up $21 million of capacity. So essentially, by the time we get to 2033, our last year assessment, $21 million of that would be the fund, the last portion of unfunded liability. If that drops off, all we do is pay normal costs every year. So in 2034, if everything went according to plan, we could have this big chunk of capacity in our budget that would really make life easier on funding a debt service cost for the high school. Again, this debt service is going to start now, so that bridge from now until 2034 or 2035 is really the red zone right now and what we're talking about and how we get to the building of this project. We're okay now. We might be okay in 2035, but we really need a concrete plan on what we're going to do to fill that gap between there. So we could also extend the funding schedule by law. We can extend it to 2040, which would bring those payments down year over year, which may create capacity. However, by extending that out to 2040, we don't get that realization of freeing up that unfunded liability for several years. So that will take some analysis and discussion on which may be better to take a medicine now or to try to stretch it out a little bit. So pension, that's a big one. All right. Next slide, please. So how else do we create capacity? Well, every year, we do an annual operating budget. If we can have expenses of the operating budget increase slower than the revenues generated, then we'll slowly create capacity. So how do you decrease operating budgets? We've got to really look at reducing or maintaining full-time equivalents wherever possible. Every full-time equivalent comes with a pension liability. It comes with health insurance and all that stuff. You can average about 30 to 40% of a person's pay in the city is, I like to call it total compensation. It's not just your salary. It's your health insurance benefit. It's your pension benefit, et cetera. So any control we can have on FTEs, we can try to slow down that growth. Collective bargaining. Everyone knows, we just, we've settled with every union except police patrolmen. We are a verbal agreement right now on a contract that they have to vote that will get us to fiscal year 2024, and then we'll be right back at the table again. So how we strategize for collective bargaining as far as schools, they negotiate the contracts on behalf of the school committee with the teachers and, and paraprofessionals. City side deals with mostly every other union, police, fire, public works, Local 22. Long story short, we've been pretty fair with the, with the bargaining units over the five years I've been here, and I, I don't think it's going to get better. I think it's going to get worse. We can look to privatize, reduce, eliminate services. We can look to public-private partnerships. That's kind of a big buzzword, how those things help us with our operating budget. I think we should explore those. And looking to regionalize, automate, consolidate wherever possible, anything we can do to try to create cost savings will help us reach the goal. Next slide. We also do a capital plan and a capital budget every year. So capital plan is the plan, the blueprint for the city. This high school has been in that capital plan every year since I've been here. Started off at $300 million and went to $384. Now it's up to where it is now. So with time is money. So we try to do our capital as quickly as possible. We try to take advantage of the good bond ratings that we have and some of the oil rates to do our vehicle purchases, our parks and open space, any repairs to public buildings and facilities, our roadways, our sidewalks. All of that capital planning is going to have to be really analyzed and what effect would funding a new high school have on all the other aspects of the capital planning that we've been doing so well at? So going to have to take a really good look at that. I mean, we were borrowing money at 2% for a while, which is, which is great. I mean, we hadn't seen that in, in my career. We never seen rates so low. But now projecting costs now, we're using 5% instead of 2%. And anybody knows who's trying to buy a house or do anything, buy a car, it just, that rate goes up. It really makes the affordability tougher. So we're in a, we're in tough times right now with these rates, but the good news is that they could be back lowering by the time we have to bond for this high school. No one has a crystal ball, but I have to plan for what the owner is now, and all my projections are based upon 4% for temporary bonds and 5% for permanent bonds, and that's through our financial advisors at Hilltop Security. Like I said, in the fiscal year '22 to '26 capital plan, which was the last one that we presented, we did have $223 million as the city share of the debt for the high school. Now, it sat in the last year of the plan, so it doesn't really get the sunshine it's getting now, but now we're here and it's time to talk about it. So I just wanted to be able to throw every option I thought we had to the council when I talked about where we could go for this long-range planning. And the last slide, please. So my hope is to get feedback from this presentation, whether it's tonight, whether it's in a committee, whether it's by email, phone call. Everybody knows how to get in touch with me here. Happy to discuss the merits of anything on here, and like I've said probably several times, too many, but I really just try to get a full picture of everything that we have in our toolbox to try to get this high school done. And what I've heard from everybody is that we want to get it done. So these are the things that I believe have to be addressed, figure out what we can and what we can't do and what we will and what we won't do, and then we can come to some decisions. So looking to have city council vote on an updated trim-down budget on this by March 1st, and I'm not going to get into the timeline of that vote. I'll let the OPM and them get into the why the timeline is so critical. But what I'd like to see is after a vote, hopefully in the affirmative, we'll form some subcommittees that would include some city counselors, some school committee members, some staff, and really take these topics that I've laid out and kind of drill down and work each department, whether it's new growth, whether it's new fees, whether it's health insurance, and really try to get some, some feedback on everybody on what we can do, what types of money we may realize or may save from these things, and really try to get this high school built without burdening the taxpayers, as they say, because we can't tax them any more than we tax them now. So it's really not fair to say, oh, the city's just going to put it on the backs of the taxpayers. We're, we're taxing what we can tax by law. We don't have any capacity to tax anymore for this high school, and that's why this menu of options was brought before you to consider. And my old, I used to have an old boss that said, we plan the work, and then we work the plan, and I'm hoping that we can all come together and get this high school built. So thank you for letting me get through that. I'm happy to stand up here and take any questions, and if I don't have the answers, I'll be happy to try to get them to you.
Thank you. I do want to, this is going to go to Ways and Means, but I know that there's an appetite to probably ask some questions. So I'll start this way and move our way down, and then this will be referred to Ways and Means. Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question, Mr. Vizcay. Thank you for that presentation. Do we know the cost of the eminent domain off the top of your head, or is it finalized?
I do know that we have a bond for $29.5 million for that eminent domain purchase, and that is what I believe our appraisal came in at. And what ultimately happens with that remains to be seen. So right now, I know what you know, and that's that amount. We've bonded it. It's already, it's going to be part of the 2024 budget. It's about $1.5 million for the first two years, and then $2 million a year after that to pay for that, that, that we did bond it for 25 years versus 30 years because we, we found that we, we got a better rate and saved the, saved a lot more money on interest costs by going 25 years. So that's what I know about that.
Counselors? Any other counselors over here? Counselor Serena.
Thank you, Mr. President. Threw you to Mr. Vizcay. I just want to say thank you for presenting us these options. I know it's a very difficult conversation and not popular one to have. I will just say, I know it's going to Ways and Means, but I would hope that we can really look toward the cost savings approach, trimming the budget, maybe that GIC healthcare plan type, you know, anything on cost savings rather than, you know, looking to a possible, you know, trash fee or building, the building permits, raising the building permit fees or any other fees for that matter in the city. Because I think what we, you know, and I'm, I'm not running for reelection, so this isn't political, but what I hear every day is, you know, the average taxpayer is burdened as it is. You know, I know property values are going up and have gone up, but for a lot of residents who plan on staying and dying in their house, quite frankly, that doesn't necessarily, you know, matter as much to them. And I think, you know, one thing we didn't really hear much about is how the commercial development that we've seen over the last 10 years, you know, how can we squeeze Amazon and Red Gate and HYM and every one of these developers for every penny, you know, that we can possibly get in terms of revenue back to the city and commercial tax rates and all of that? So just those are my thoughts, and I hope they'll be considered by Ways and Means. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank you, Rich, for that, that 30,000-foot view. You know, looking forward to getting to Ways and Means so we can, you know, I, I, as I say, I've got a lot of questions. I'm assuming and hoping that we'll get some latitude because, you know, this is a major project. So look forward to talking to you again in Ways and Means.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Rich, I, I believe the local option we have right now on the meals tax is what, 0.75%?
0.75, yeah.
Okay.
0.75, which is the maximum allowable. So we, we, and we're doing quite well. And, you know, I could have made this presentation three hours long, and I tried to make it so people wouldn't fall asleep, but certainly a lot of the new development, what comes with that is the car tax, the meals tax, the rooms tax, all that stuff. So really, as things get developed, that, all that revenue we got to consider, but we also have to consider the impact on local government, which is going to be more burdened on our DPW and our public safety, et cetera. So we can't just take every new dollar and put it towards the high school because there's got to be the balance of everything else, and it's, and it's, it's a difficult task. But I think if we all work together, we'll be all right.
Are we at the max now with 0.75%?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Just my question.
Yeah, the, you know, the, the local options tax that we're not taking advantage of is the cannabis tax and the impact fees, and, and, and that's, that's really the one that, that we can, we can, we don't have that revenue stream right now. So if that becomes a brand-new revenue stream, one could consider dedicating every dollar of it to, towards the new high school. But I can tell some people aren't thrilled with that idea.
What are we deriving right now?
Leave me out of this. Leave me out of this, please. Do what you want to do. Leave me out of it. Counselor Zambito. Apologies. You still have the floor.
Airbnb tax, what type of revenue is that bringing in?
I didn't touch on that. I think we have a revolving fund set up right now for those dollars, but those are set by the council, and they're not, I wouldn't say they're moving the needle a lot, that particular revenue source. I think anything we get is just kind of paying for the, for the management and the database that we keep on those properties, but it's, it's not really generating meaningful income that, that would make a difference at this particular point.
The reason I ask because I, I know of two houses close to me that were originally one or two families, they're now listed as three families. And my question with regard to getting as much revenue as we can because they're certainly using our services as much as they can. So that, that was my reason for asking that question.
Yeah, it's a valid point, but again, I don't think that's, I don't think that's building our high school, but we should look into it for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Zambito.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. CFO, for this presentation and the courage to present it because most everything on here is goddamn offensive, excuse my language, and I don't see a lot of support for it. And if you think a million dollars is marijuana is going to pay for a $500 million high school, I think we're dreaming. But the point is, I'm going to save my questions for the Ways and Means Committee, but this is a, this is a tough mountain to climb, and my, my fear is, I don't want to use the word, but my, my fear is that we end up, God forbid, we're in a recession, we end up in receivership, and we end... recession, we end up in receivership, and we end up like Chelsea, because we're talking about money that I can't see coming up with. And, uh, but I'll save the rest of my comments for the Ways and Means Committee.
Thank you, Counselor. My fears, I don't bring up all my fears here, but I got you. I have a lot of fears.
You gotta be a realist.
Yeah. Alarmist, but whatever. Counselor Visconti.
Go ahead.
I don't want to be-
Uh-
Counselor Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rich, thank you, uh, for this presentation. I looked over it a few times, uh, just to, uh, make sure I understood it, uh, and was pretty clear, so I know you made it nice and simple, it was actually a, a real good presentation. I didn't fall asleep, you know, unlike, uh, maybe some of, uh, some others. This is something that is, is a huge decision, okay, on this council. So, it's something that I, and I know along with my fellow colleagues, can't take lightly, because it, it can't fall on the taxpayer and taxpayers, and that's what's happening, I mean, that's what the concern is out there, okay, that it's gonna fall on them. So, I understand that, and I'm gonna save, I, I got a ton of questions, I, I don't think this is the time. One of the major things right now, I'm gonna still hop on, I've been on that committee, myself and, uh, Mr., the, the president here have been on this committee for the last three years, okay? My major concern right now is still the price tag, okay? And that price tag, okay, when decisions were made, um, i.e., let's say the bonding of the Wonderland site, and Mr. Dakin's not here unfortunately, uh, I was wondering why he wasn't here, but, uh,
He had a meeting.
Okay, which is taken, okay, um, but I'm just, and, and I'll, I'll leave that, uh, for the subcommittee, but I'll be honest with you, that the, the, the cost of this high school, when we first went into, um, um, discussions about, uh, the design, everything, we were thrown, we were, we were giving a three-hundred-and-thirty-eight-million-dollar, um, price tag, okay? Um, in that price tag, had contingencies from what I'm understanding, then we also added a twenty percent increase because of cost and all of that, um, so we even increased it up to about three-hundred-and-eighty million dollars. My problem is, all of a sudden, we're thrown at four-ninety-nine, okay, at last minute, okay? And now, you're telling me that it's being reduced down to four-forty. So, the numbers are all over the place, I'm, like, I'm spinning my head going, okay, in two weeks, we just dropped sixty million dollars. How is that, okay? And how legitimate was the four-ninety-nine number? And, and that's my major concern, and, you know, we, we talk about the, the side that Revere has to pay, but it, it's all the same as far as I'm concerned, because if that top number goes down, then Revere's, um, number comes down. So, decisions were made on the three-hundred-and-thirty-eight-million-dollar number, okay? And we were hoping that, I understand that it's not, um, it, it's not to the penny, but to be off that much, okay, when decisions like, um, where purchasing the Wonderland site, um, was based on is, is not fair to the council. We're, we're giving a number that we're hoping has some validity to it, and now you throw a higher number at us. Meanwhile, we've made a decision on purchasing, uh, potentially fifty, sixty-million-dollar, um, purchase of, of the Wonderland site. Well, maybe that num, maybe that site is no longer a valid, um, potential anymore because we're so off, you know, and that's my concern here. It's, it's a big number, it's nothing to take lightly, and I'm sorry I've gone on, thank you, Mr. President, for the leeway, but I don't feel comfortable, even at, I'm sorry that, I, I understand, um, Counsel Marabito, uh, brought down, um, that number to four-forty, and maybe he feels comfortable, I do not, okay? And I'm gonna make that quite clear here, that four-forty, decisions were made on the three-thirty-eight, I don't know why it's gone up so high, and I can't answer that. People are coming up to me out there and saying, "Why are we buy, why are we paying the most expensive high school? Why are we building the most expensive high school? Uh, is it the Cadillac of high schools? I don't know, I don't know what we're doing, um, it's, it's a shock, the, the, the price tag is a shock." I think we really need, uh, Leftfield really needs to come down and, and really get a hold of those numbers. If that's what you're saying is the number, four-forty is the number, well, that's a problem right from the get-go for me, okay? And I'm gonna be quite clear, and, and this, uh, I'm not holding back on that, because I made a decision to purchase, uh, to vote yes on Wonderland based on the three-thirty-eight, not the four-forty, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and, and just so we're clear, uh, Mr. Vizcay, uh, the, the taxpayer can, we, we, there's no more tax that we can put on the taxpayer to, to pay for this, correct?
That's correct. I mean, we, we get two-and-a-half percent increase on our levy, that's a hundred-and-seven million, so every year we get that, plus whatever new growth comes in. Typically, that new growth is borne by the new improvements or the new buildings that come on, so it doesn't really reflect the taxes that would be paid by those existing taxpayers now, so, you know, while some properties go up in value and down, multifamily condo, et cetera, that, we, we are maxed out. I mean, that's what makes this challenging, I mean, not that it would be popular, what if the mayor had twenty-million dollars of taxing capacity, we didn't, we wouldn't even have to ask, we would just come in, raise taxes twenty million and, and build the high school and feel the wrath of the taxpayer, but we, we're not, we're not, we don't have the ability to just put it on the taxpayer, and I think one of the most important things I want to bring forward to, especially the people watching is, we just don't have the ability to do that. It would have to come before the taxpayers for us to tax any more than what we're legally allowed to, and since we're rammed right up against that levy limit, we just, the, the, the one myth I want to bust today is that we cannot just build this high school and, and shove it down the taxpayers' throat. That's why all of these unpopular-type, um, remedies that I've put before you are just that. No one wants to make these decisions because they're awful decisions in some respects, and someone's affected, whether it's the unions that pay for health insurance, or the retirees, or whatever, they're, they're all fees that gotta be borne. Our development, if we, if we raise fees, they have to pay those fees, so, I mean, I don't know, who, you know, what the best, you know, I call it a kick in the shin or a punch in the gut sometimes, but these are the tough decisions, unfortunately, that have to be made by this body that would allow us to realize building this high school without a debt exclusion type of vote.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to clear that one thing, and then another is, uh, the, the hu, uh, extra hundred million, or extra hundred million dollars roughly, um, that was asked for, or whatever the number was, that, that, that was in case the project went over, corrected? They were going to try not to spend that additional money, um, that, that was, and the reason for that was so they, that they didn't have to come back to us and ask for more at that point, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the more important things to ask, and I'm not prepared to answer, and I do sit on the same committee as, uh, Counsel Visconti and the mayor and, and Counsel President here, is that, um, what eighty mil, there's eighty mil, at the four-hundred-and-ninety-nine-million-dollar price tag, there were eighty million dollars of contingencies in there. Now, when you get the, if you get it down to four-forty, those contingencies will naturally drop.
Right.
Um, the merits of those contingencies and, you know, when I hear a value engineer, and maybe the value engineer, and it has to be done on the contingencies as well, and, and again, I'm not, I'm not here to get too much into that, but I, I certainly agree with Counsel President Visconti that, I mean, former president, but, um, one of the key things is getting that cost down. I mean, from four-ninety-nine to four-forty, my debt service projection, that five percent went from twenty-two million to nineteen million. So, right there, sixty million, saved us three million dollars a year, so another sixty million could save us another three million dollars a year. And I'm not suggesting that it can, it can't be done for sixty million dollars or less, I think those are the types of things that have to be discussed in Ways and Means and bring the, uh, construction manager at-risk forward, bring the OPM forward and give you a better understanding of that, but, um, I do know that we did decide to do a CM at-risk, which we brought in the construction manager early, and I believe one of the things is to try to keep those contingencies down, because you bring them in early and you get ahead of these so-called problems. So, again, some of that stuff probably has to be explained better to the public and just understand where these dollars are coming from to, to get this final vote, that really the vote to move forward is, is the critical part, that I think that, uh, OPM and Superintendent Kelly would talk about, but unfortunately neither one will be able to be here today, so I imagine you'll be able to talk to them in committee.
Thank you, Mr. Vizcay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel Rizzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I, you know, I did say, and I, I promise you, I'm gonna save my questions for, for Ways and Means, but just one thing you said, I, and I just want some clarity, so we have thirty-three thousand dollars of levy capacity right now, okay, right? So, that's what you're basically saying, so if we're adding nineteen million dollars, um, to, to our, to our long-term debt service, how, you know, are, are you saying we will have to go, unless we implement all these, and we haven't even have a full number there, if we were to implement all of this, you know, the cuts and the increases in percentages and trash fees and all this other stuff, are you saying that we still may have to go to a, a debt exclusion vote or a Prop two-and-a-half override or something like that? I mean, do we know, uh, for, you know, for certain that, that we'll be able, because, you know, if we vote on this and we don't have a way to pay for it, right? I mean, that's just obvious, so, like, we'll know when the time comes for a vote how the city is going to be able to afford this without a vote, because if it requires a vote, I don't see how we're gonna, you know, I don't see how, how the council can vote for it if, if the funding sources isn't there.
Yeah. Let me, let me try to answer that. If nothing happens other than new growth in the city, then we would be at the mercy of those new growth dollars year in and year out, catching up to the point where we have to initially make that debt payment, but just to be clear, nineteen million is the peak, but before two thousand twenty-eight or two thousand twenty-nine, that, when that becomes realized, you're still gonna have to make debt payments in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight for those temporary borrowings as we put the money out and do construction, so, um, simply put, yeah, there's a lot of modeling that has to go into this decision, and, and, and the willingness to do any of these things will help build that model to, to show that our revenues will be able to equal our expenses. What I believe is gonna happen is, I believe if we can find funding sources for a stabilization account, or we, you know, we have stabilization account, we have Opera Funds, we have other funding sources that, um, in two years, if the debt payment's ten million and we don't have ten million in new growth, we, we'd have to draw down from those resources until the new growth would essentially catch up, because forty-six million in new growth would certainly pay for eighteen million of debt, but it's the timing of it that's really the challenge, and, and how we take that spike out of the, the debt service is really the strategy I think we gotta talk about, because we would eventually be able to pay the debt payment no problem when the pension obligation goes by and the, all the new construction, God forbid there's no recession and things shut down. I can show you that, we'll be able to afford it from twenty-thirty-four out, but it's really the critical time between now and twenty-thirty-four that we gotta kind of take some planning and figure out how to maybe take some of our savings to, to, to offset the high debt payments until that growth and those other things catch up, so it's, 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 it's gonna be a pretty tough task, but-
I don't want to, uh, I don't want, you know, I, you, I mean, this obviously is gonna require some conversation. I'm just very concerned that you're, we're still pushing this one-month deadline for a vote, and I don't know how we're gonna, you know, we're talking about filling a ten-year, eleven-year gap and all these different options that you've laid out, and, you know, we're talking about for the next eleven years how the city's gonna be able to afford until it catches up, until support, until God willing, you know, Suffolk Downs is at full build-out or-
Yeah, I mean, again, I don't know if it's ten, eleven years, but there's, there's, you know, I think a, a lot of this, like I said, I didn't want to get too much into the, the details without at least throwing this out there and getting some feedback, because if certain things are, um, voted or decided that we can do to help, I think, you know, there's not one panacea that's gonna get this done, it's a combination of things, and, and again, some of these are uncomfortable decisions, but it's really whether, you know, whether we really want to build this high school or not, and, and at what cost, and, and those are tough decisions, and I don't envy anyone who has to vote. I'm not a voting member, I'm just the, uh, the, the deliverer of the news, I try to give it to you all the time as, you know, simply and, and apolitically as possible, and, and that's what I did tonight, and figured it would not be-
And we appreciate it, and we appreciate it, Rich.
-the most popular presentation, but I, I, you know, even working with the mayor, we, you know, we kind of knew it would kind of, you know, bring in some stuff forward that is gonna, you know, be fodder in the city for a while, so, but I'm doing my best to lay the facts out and, and give it to you straight, and then we gotta make some tough decisions.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, I'm sorry, Counsel Serena and Counselor Zambito.
Thank you. Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President. Counselor Rizzo's point kind of spurred a question in my mind as well, that, you know, if we're pushing for the March first deadline to approve the design for the new high school to send to the MSBA, are we as a body going to have this essentially figured out by then? Because how do we as a body, because then, you know, they'll have our backs against the wall and say, "Well, you voted for the design plan, just like with Wonderland," and that's my fear, is that it, it gets thrown back at us by, you know, Dr. Kelly and the design team, that, you know, we've, you've already approved, like, like with Wonderland, you've already approved the Wonderland site in the spring, and then when the number came back in the fall and we were hesitant, well, they kind of had us against the wall and we had to move forward. So, my, my question is, is, um, by March first, will we have been able to determine as a body how we are going to, um, move forward with a combination of all of these or some of these, or, because then if, if we're leaving it for later, then, I mean, the obvious, the, the obvious is that it, it will end up going either to a Prop two-and-a-half override or, you know, we'll have to make those decisions to, you know, put trash fees or raise, uh, fees and permits and stuff like that. So, will we have everything done by March first if, you know, if that's what they want?
So, if, if I'm understanding your question, I can't answer whether this body's gonna be prepared by March first. My job is gonna be to help you make the best decision you could based upon the tools we have to make this a realization. I can't tell you how y'all are gonna vote on any of this, so I, I wish I could, and the, the deadline is the deadline that's set by the MSBA, and the OPM's trying to adhere to that, and, like, we know time is money, so I don't think it's gonna get any cheaper the more we delay, but certainly a, a, a pretty difficult decision. I know I'll be busy the next month just trying to furnish everybody all the information they can have just to even, you know, potentially make the vote, so, um, I don't have a great answer for you, your body has to vote it, but I'm, I'm here to help you any way I could.
So, um, and Counselor, great, great question, uh, and great point, uh, and I think that's where we're looking for, for your input, obviously, on the presentation, uh, and to kind of segue into a conversation about what, what we do now, right? We're gonna go into a Ways and Means meetings, and we're gonna have more detailed information. We're gonna talk about, you know, we're not talking about a ten- or eleven-year gap, we're talking about really probably a three- or four-year kind of timeline where it's gonna be really tight, right? So, that, that highest debt payment, uh, whatever it is, if it's nineteen million or if we work that, if we get that down even further, that highest debt payment will be twenty-twenty-nine, right? And you heard from, from, uh, our CFO, you know, we're pretty confident that by twenty-thirty-four, you know, we're gonna be, or twenty-thirty-three, we'll be in, in really good shape. Um, so it's, it's really finding the ways to cobble together, uh, between, um, that period and, and not, you know, right now, because there aren't any debt payments or anything that we're paying right now that are gonna be, um, impacted. Uh, the other thing that I'd say is, uh, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna work, obviously, with the Ways and Means Subcommittee, uh, and, uh, my hope is that we could have, you know, possibly a, a longer meeting to go into these kind of details, and, um, I've already talked to the CFO about some of the ways that I can visualize making this work and looking at the different options and kind of, um, uh, making kind of sense and really truly making a financial plan, right? What we're gonna be looking for is a financial plan that helps us pay for this, um, this project that, you know, again, the, a, a full, a full debt payment isn't gonna be due until twenty-twenty-nine, um, so that, you know, fiscal twenty-nine. The other thing that I, I wanted to kind of put a fine point on is, uh, the goal for going forward will be hearing from the OPM directly, obviously Brian's not here, but, um, even he was gonna be prepared to go into a little bit more detail around, um, even, you know, Richard mentioned kind of comps around what, what other communities are, are, um, facing and how we can learn from the experiences of other communities, because there are other places that are building high schools, and we want to measure up and see, you know, are there things that they're doing that we can, we can draw off of? So, I think that's really important, uh, you know, it's not that we're necessarily way out of whack with other, other districts that are building- other districts that are building, building projects, but we want to be able to, to draw off their, 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 the information that they have. And Brian and the team at Leftfield are going to go into kind of hopefully excruciating detail around that, and if there are opportunities for, for kind of further conversation around potential value engineering or other things that may happen. The other thing that I'll say is, you know, we are throwing around a lot of numbers and they're all over the place, and that's just a function of the fact that we are in an interesting economic time, and this is a project that's a long-term project, right? And so I know that there's obviously sticker shock when we talk about hundreds of millions of dollars, but the, the, the vote on, from March 1st is, is around design, and there are implications that correlate between design and, and, and the, the amount of money that's going to cost. But we're going to be talking about different numbers for a pretty significant amount of time, right? And as we go through this and as we, you know, work and, and, and come up with the solutions, the end goal is to build a school that we all agree, if we're all to take some truth serum, we'd say we want to build a new high school. And it's going to take all of us working together to be able to, to make that happen. And, you know, and, and there has to be within that an enormous amount of trust between all of us to, to make this happen. And that's what, what we're, we're looking to do, and we're going to build that over, we've built that, but we're going to continue to jar off of that over the next series of meetings and really get into detail about those, those items and figure out how we make this something that, that we can be very proud of. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President, and, and I'm probably not the one to bring this up, but, because I was one of the people that voted against the bond at Wonderland. But I think that as a council, we have to look at, I know the mayor talked about trust, and I don't think it's about trust that, that there was any intent to deceive, but the bottom line is, this council did not have the proper information before they voted for Wonderland. They figure changed $120 million after the fact. That, in my mind, is a reason to pull it back and look at another option. And, and, and my biggest fear, and I absolutely want to build a high school. My site was the high school where it is now, but the bottom line is, I want to build a high school we can, we can pay for. I don't want to be one of the guys that was on the council that put the city in receivership. I, I, I know you keep saying, "Don't talk about that," but that's a realistic thing. Say that again?
Counselor.
Mr. President.
Right. Are you good?
Through, no, I'm not good. The bottom line is, this, this date that's out there, that this new date is, is being built on trust, and I don't think we can do that as advocates for the taxpayers. That's why we're hired. That's what we're up here to do, is to protect the taxpayers. And I know, we all know we need a high school, but we also got to be fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know this is going to Ways and Means, but we've been here for like an hour and a half talking about this. But my biggest concern is we're taking, we're taken away from PETA to pay Paul. And the thing is that I'm really worried about, we're taking the $47 million eventually from HYM, we're taking this from here, we're taking this from here. What happens to the rest of our city? What happens to our sidewalks and our infrastructure and our streets? And, and because we're not going, I know we have chaptered this and, and, you know, but we're taken away from our city. That's what we're doing. Just, I, and listen, I want a high school. I understand what it entails, you know, and what these kids are going through every day, being compacted into classrooms and, and what the teachers are, you know, enduring. But the thing is, I just feel like if we take all this money from the, the developments and, and the infi, the HYM, something's going to suffer in the city. And I don't want to say, I want to see the city prosper. I don't want to see it go down. So that's my biggest concern.
Yeah, I would agree. I think that's probably everybody's concern, Counselor. I mean, there's, the dollars that we generate to do anything in the city, it's a tug-of-war, even without a high school, whether we're funding public safety or public health or public works or administration or capital projects. So it's, it's, it's not an easy task, and, and you're right, the dollars we spend on the high school, we can't spend somewhere else. But what are our options? Not to build a high school, become discredited and, and be in a high school that's not suitable to the residents of the city? I mean, I don't think there's an end game on not building it. So I think at some point, we have to come to the decision on how much we're going to spend, where it's going to be, and then we got to plan the work and work the plan. Again, we, we are lucky to be the fastest-growing community in the Commonwealth. We're lucky to have HYM here to, to do all this great development that's going to generate all kinds of revenues. And I think, I think we'll all look back and, and say that, thank God, we did what we did now, because it's not going to get any cheaper, and, you know, it's a monumental task. We, we took over Wonderland, that's an institution in the city, but again, people talk about it, but it's been sitting there 12 years, looking like crap. So what about building a state-of-the-art high school for our residents there that has T-access, that has access to Boston, that has access to potentially Silverline? We have no other choices. So I'm here to try to do everything I could to present the financial plan that is, is palatable to the council and, and makes it happen. And I know that these decisions are tough, but you're right. We, we spend money on the high school, we're not going to be able to spend it somewhere else, and that's, that's all part of the way it works from year to year anyhow, so.
Thank you, Mr. Fiskin.
Mr. President, me, one.
Counselor Visconti.
Thank you, and I'll, and I'll end. If we, I, I know this is obviously going into Ways and Means, my committee, but if we can also have Solicitor Capizzi come in as well and answer some questions regarding, you know, the eminent domain, the spot, and, you know, discussing what the options are there, just throwing it out there where it, it may be a $50 million, right now it's a $30 million price tag on Wonderland. We don't know what the end price tag is going to be, and if we're that far over budget, maybe we should be looking at the, the second choice. I don't know what the, I don't know what the ramifications are for that, but I think it's something that we should be looking at as well and seeing what that number is. And I'm not here to debate that, I just want to.
I don't, I don't want to debate it. We, we're all part of the School Building Committee, and you know that the, aside from Wonderland, the, the, the school, the building being built was going to be the similar size in terms of, of budget, right? So if, whether we build at Wonderland or at the current high school site, the, the cost to build the building were going to be the same. And so I don't want there to be this false narrative that going to the high school is going to be a cheaper option or going backwards, because ultimately, no matter what, if we, if we in any way stop the, the progress that we're making, it's going to cost more money. It's only going to cost more money. So just want to, want to make sure that that's clear, that, you know, we've picked a site, right? Everyone's picked a site. We've, we've gotten this far with the design. We're, you know, technically, there's going to be another vote after this one, right? There's going to be another vote for a bond authorization, right? So that, we're not even talking necessarily about money. The design is tied to the money, I get it. But at the end of the day, there's going to be another, another call and another conversation and another vote for everyone to take on an actual bond authorization. That's going to be a really, a really, you know, difficult conversation. So we, you know, we've gotten, we're, we're in the middle of this process right now, but I don't want there to be this kind of, this false narrative out there that if we, if we hit pause and we go somewhere else, or if we go back to the current site, then that, like, that's going to be a cheaper option, because it's just quite simply not going to be. And we're not doing the taxpayers any justice if we truly want to build a school. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Powers, and maybe I'll have a chance to.
Thank you, Mr. President. One thing that sticks in my mind is the fact that 10, 12 years ago, Wonderland was closed. There were buildings down there that were dangerous, disrepair. The fact that 17% of that property, 17 acres of that property, rather, is in a flood area. And that property has just sat there all of these years. No one coming, asking to build on them, implying they wanted to build on them, or had a plan to build on them. And, and I dare say right now, if we pulled away from Wonderland, and, and maybe some people say that's the right thing, some people say it's the wrong thing, but if we did, I dare say that Wonderland would sit there for another five years in its present condition. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, so, you know, we, there's a lot, this is going to Subcommittee, but just a couple of things I wanted to bring up, you know, for, for what I think we need to do, is I, we, step one, we have to reduce the cost, right? We have to find a way to reduce the overall cost. You can come up with it, that's fine. There's no doubt about that. No one's happy about the figure, and it's something that, we have to internalize, we can't just say, oh, we're going to pass the buck off to the taxpayers, which I know we're not, you're not saying that. But we have to reduce the cost, the overall cost. Then we have to look internally, without making ultimate sacrifices, obviously, quality of life sacrifices to the residents or Revere, but we have to look internally as to how we can afford it. You can't say, let's go on vacation, let's take the kids to Disney and not be able to make the mortgage payment. You know what I'm saying? Families don't work that way. If they do, bad things happen. So we want, we want to build the new high school, everyone agrees with that, but we, we're a little, we're, everyone's a little shocked and odd with the, the, the new, newest price tags. So, but on, even if it was a $350 million high school, we'd still have to find a way to, I think, I, I'd put down 12 million debt payment. How do we find $12 million a year in debt payment? So let's just pretend it was 350. Everyone's happy, kumbaya. We have to find 12 million a year. So those are the types of ways we have to think about and plan is how we're going to do that internally, making some tough decisions, but also keep, keeping the integrity of our city and the, and the quality to our residents, and, and obviously, investing in our future, because that has to happen, whatever we do. So a couple of things I did want you to bring up that you would hopefully, in the next meeting, have. Opera Funds, I'm not, let's not all be naive, some of these Opera Funds are probably a little frivolously, frivolously planned, potentially, not all of them, but, you know, do we need to, you know, if we really break it down, how much of that can we find and cubby into this? Because everyone thinks it's free money. I'm not saying the city thinks it's free money, but everyone thinks it's free money. Oh, we got Opera Funds, we'll just use that. We'll create, we'll create a new position, you know? Let's, let's just be real, right?
Don't give them any ideas.
No, right? I mean, we have to, we have to look at that. The other one is the consent decree, which is now up to the 10-year, the original 10-year, is we have to get tougher on that. We have to, we have to fight back. That costs us about 10 million a year, consent decree, correct? More than that.
Yeah, I mean, again, tho, tho, those consent decrees are paid through honor-saw rate, so it's an enterprise fund, but that's, your point's still valid.
Right. And, and, and there's, there's, obviously, there's a number, you had some great suggestions. I don't know if I necessarily agree with all of them, but we have to look internal, and if that's FTEs, whatever it may be, we have to figure it out. And yes, FTE, one FTE might save us $30, $40,000, but ultimately, that's, that's the way that we're going to have to really look at, how can we afford 12, 15, 14 million in annual expenses? I'm not sure if the school, the current situation that it's in is looking to, you talked about having a stabilization fund to help with those offset, offsetting payments, can start banking on that now. Because I know that down the road, we could potentially use rainy day fund as well, not all of it, but if we had to make up a million dollars on year five, year seven, we can use stabilization funds. Is there a school stabilization fund that they can start banking now, looking at expenses and kind of maybe not, maybe not doing everything they want to do so that we can help create that? So those are the ones I'd like to, like to, like to dive into before the next, at the next meeting, okay?
Yeah, I mean, we created the school stabilization trust account, so, you know, part of the presentation was to actually come up with some policies on what, what types of dollars we can dedicate to that, whether it's a percentage of free cash, dedicate a revenue stream. So I'm with you on that. I believe we're all on the same page there, and I think that's actually a critical part of taking that, that spike out of the, the debt service that comes on early before some of the other things that would help us realize, whether it's the pension being fully funded or the new growth catching up. So that's, that critical 3, 4, 5, or whatever window it is, we can drill down, and I anticipate that all these questions will come forward, and it'll probably be what keeps me pretty busy the next couple of months.
Mr. President, one final point of clarification, if I may, just because a couple of things Counselor Zambudo said and Counselor Powers said, and I think it's one of the reasons that we keep, you know, people like us, well, people like, I think Counselor Zambudo and myself, keep on, you know, obviously, the whole council's concerned about the cost of the project, but even if it was the same cost to build in the same location in, in tiers, right? We're still not, two things. One, we're not paying for that property at Wonderland, which at a bare minimum is 29 million. I think everybody's pretty certain it's going to go up from there. I mean, what happens if it goes to 60? What happens if it goes to 70? What happened, I mean, you know, I know when we were discussing it, I said 100 million is what basically the same acreage was paid for by Blackrock, but, you know, up on 1A. But, but, but let's just say, you know, I mean, an extra 30 million, what's that on top of the debt service? And in the meantime, you're taking the value of that land that could be generating taxes to pay for the project. So it's kind of a double. You know, you're paying all these tens of millions of dollars and not generating revenue to help pay for the school. I think that's why some of us are dead set on, you know, hey, I mean, you know, kind of looking at this a little bit. This is a long-term investment, and I think that's why there's a lot of hesitancy from people like myself, Counselor Zambudo, and I, I venture to say maybe some others. So that's all I have, Mr. President.
Yeah, just briefly, I think I fully agree, and I've been saying it all along, is I think a really important part of the Wonderland site is carving off some of the acres there to get some development, at least, at least enough to pay for the purchase of the land itself. But I also think that the current high school failed site was also considered the pros and cons, and, you know, one of the reasons why it's good to not build on that site is that we get to not raise the existing high school and that be potentially available for middle school and a middle school campus over there. So there's, there's opportunities lost, so there's pros and cons with everything. So, and again, well, it's going to committee, right?
It's going to committee. All in favor of Ways and Means Subcommittee?
Calendar item number 11, communication from the mayor relative to an update regarding the Revere High School project.
I mean, Mr. Mayor? Placed and filed?
Placed and filed.
All right, placed and filed.
Calendar item number 12, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Dean Harris to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees.
Appointments?
Calendar item number 13, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Claire Inzarella to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Appointments?
Calendar item number 14, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Seth Rhodes to the Planning Board. Calendar item number 15, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Samantha Woodman to the Conservation Commission.
Further appointments?
Calendar item number 16, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Asha Waterhouse to the Public Art Commission.
Refer to appointments.
Calendar item number 17, communication from the city CFO relative to FY '23 capital improvement loan orders.
This is going to go to a public hearing on February 6th, 2023?
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Counselor Zambudo that the city council president be directed to attach correspondence relative to Council Order 22342, the Revere High School project schematic design, scope, schedule, and budget to Council Order 22342, which is currently in Ways and Means. Pursuant to Rule 18 of the City Council Rules of Order, all communications relating to matters which may be properly considered and reported on by a Subcommittee of the City Council shall be referred thereto by the president.
Counselor Zambudo.
It's a moot point at this point. We did it. It's already in Ways and Means, and there's no point going any further.
See? I read your mind, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Placed and filed.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor request the GPW to renovate the rear entrance of the Rositty Cowan Senior Center to provide handicap accessibility. The rear entrance, as it exists now, is difficult and dangerous for seniors to use. This mo, motion was previously approved on March 28th and signed by the mayor on April 12th.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this motion speaks for itself, but I do think that we need to start the rear access into the senior center. It's that we need to start the rear access into the senior center. It's deplorable, and a lot of seniors can't get up the stairs. So, and it was approved, so I just don't understand why we're waiting. Thank you.
Great. Counselor Visconti.
Thank you again for putting this motion. And I believe this motion was approved way back when, by, was put in by myself and Counselor Serino, as well, as well as Rep. Janino when she was on the council. So, but this was, yeah. So I, I appreciate you putting in this motion again. Hopefully, that ramp can get done and get fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Great motion, Counselor. All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Counselor Visconti that the mayor request the DPW to pick up debris and trash along the fence on Luchia.
Counselor Visconti.
Speaks for itself.
All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Counselor Zambudo that the may be requested to provide the city council with all public records, including but not limited to correspondence, emails, text messages, photographs, plans, memoranda, opinions, notes, requests, or any other documents within the possession of the city of Revere and Perkins Eastman Leftfield relating to the new proposed 499,976,865, I'm sorry, eight, I'm sorry, $65 schematic design budget for the new Revere High School.
Counselor Visconti, I'm sorry, Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is obviously just a FOIA request because of, I'm trying to get to the bottom of exactly when and what happened and when it was known. And I have an ulterior motive. We'll talk about that later.
No. Counselor Zambudo. All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Counselor Rizzo that the city council sponsor an informational session to discuss coyote behavior in ways residents can avoid and reduce any intrusive interactions with these wild animals. The city of Malden has utilized the services of Chalice Bird, a Northeast District Wildlife biologist at Mass Wildlife.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the motion pretty well speaks for itself. But as we know, there are, like many other communities, we've got a significant coyote problem here in the city, and some people have it a little worse than others. Malden has a great program through Mass Wildlife where they'll have an informational session to people about maybe how to, how to deal with coyotes that might be in their area and, and kind of some do's and don't. So I don't know too much about it, but I've been told that it's a very good informational session that might be helpful to people who are concerned about coyotes. I know a lot of people with small pets, they're very concerned about the, the, you know, manifestation of, of these coyotes. And so hopefully, you know, we can get that. And the city council can sponsor that, I believe. So, you know, we can ask them to maybe even have it here in the council chambers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Silvestri and Counselor Zambudo. Counselor McKenna. Okay, Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Danny, Counselor Rizzo, this was an excellent motion. I just want to add to this. We've had a lot of coyotes down in Stop and Shop and Target because people are feeding them. And what they're doing is they're throwing food out. And when the coyotes come out of the marsh, they take pictures. Okay, so the people are the culprits here, not the coyotes. Okay, I've asked Tom O'Brien to put some signs down around that area so they won't feed them. But I think we need to live with them. They're everywhere, you know, mostly in marshes, in cemeteries. And they don't come out unless, you know, they come out at night, but they don't come out, you know, just to, and walk the streets. Once in a while they do, but people have to stop feeding them. That's, thank you.
Great point. Thank you. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Counselor, this is a great motion. I actually received four phone calls in the past week. Coyotes on Reservoir Ave. They're in the backyards early in the AM as a few gentlemen are leaving for work. And they're very concerned about their pets and their children. I don't know how we solve this problem, but it is time that we look into ways to, to at least have some sort of response when, when there's women and children and animals that are being home alone and coyotes are roaming in yards. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thanks to Counselor Rizzo for putting this in. We've been dealing with coyotes for a long time up on High Street, and it's a, it's an epidemic. And I've reached out to the wildlife in the state, and they give you no, no help at all. You know, you can't move the dens, you can't, you can't harm the coyotes. And then I see something that they're allowed to shoot them in the hand, you know, it's, it's, there's just no policy that's set up one way or the other. How do they get permission to shoot coyotes in one place and I can't get a den moved, you know, from, from behind High Street? But it's, it is a tough situation, and nobody wants to harm wild animals. But on the other hand, some of us that have small animals and, and, you know, my neighbor Pauline, for years, has been begging us to do something. And I've really tried to reach out through the state, and we've gotten nowhere. So any help we can get, this Malden thing, I want to check into it, see what it is. But I appreciate the fact that you put the motion in. Thank you.
Correct. And just for the record, Hunt, they were, were talking about bringing in shop shooters, not like just people with guns, but certainly, I don't agree with that either.
I understand shop shooters.
Right, right. It's, it's nuts. I wouldn't be in favor of that, and I think it's wrong. But they were trying to work the system in some sort of nature conservatory, which was really wrong.
There's got to be, there has to be a solution.
Counselor McKenna.
Probably not shooting.
Right, no, I don't, I would not agree with that.
Mr. President, to Counselor Zambudo's, what he said, I just want to say, if you call the environmental police, they'll come down and shoot them. They won't relocate them. So, and they are protected. I don't know how Hunt got around this, but they are protected. So, you know, I don't know the answer for this, but they, they will come down and shoot them. So.
Mr. President, if I could just, just for Counselor McKenna's edification, kind of what you were saying is the reason for this meeting. Like, I'm sure that people that would be interested in attending a meeting like this, the, you know, Mass Wildlife, or whether it's Chalice Bird or another representative, is going to tell them, please don't feed the coyotes. Like, some people may just be ignorant to that and not really know. They might get a kick out of it, not realize the risks. So, you know, these are the, this is really the purpose for the informational meeting. And as far as just, I mean, I heard Counselor Silvestri say Reservoir Ave. I heard Counselor Zambudo say High Street. I've got it on video, three of them walking down Roland Road. So, I mean, like, I, like, you know, they are literally all over the city. And, and they can be, you know, they're wild animals. They can be dangerous. So, anyway, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Well, clearly, it's, it's, it's a citywide issue that we have to be more informed about. So thank you, Counselor Rizzo. All in favor?
Calendar item number 23, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the mayor request the traffic commission to expand the hours of resident parking enforcement from 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, this is going to be filed separately with traffic, but I'm glad it is here so we can have a discussion about it. And if, you know, people aware that we're trying to change it. You know, I've discussed this with Director Babo. There's a few things happening. One, being at 6:00 AM or 6:01, people are showing up to someone's house, parking on the street, carpooling into town. They don't have to be back to move their cars until 12. And also, they're going to be switching the shifts for the overnight parking clerks. And they're going to be switching from 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM. And switching the times to the resident parking only would, it would be a lot better because we would be able to cover more of the city. Because right now, we're not able to cover the entire city overnight. We're not able to, to ticket the people that, you know, don't have resident parking. And that, that's been one of the problems. You know, they've been trying to get a license plate reader, and they have not succeeded in doing so. So I'm just, I brought this here because I'm sincerely curious about what my colleagues have to say about it. So, thank you.
Counselor Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I usually agree with my good friend from Ward Three, but on this one, I'm sorry to say, I kind of totally disagree. In part because if we start ticketing people at 10:00 PM that don't have their residential stickers, what happens if you have company over on a, on any night, on a summer night, or, you know, on any night? I really think that that's kind of going a little too far. I think midnight is definitely more, you know, appropriate in the, in the evening. And then on the morning side, I think 8:00 AM is a little too late, perhaps 7:00 AM. But between 7:00 and 8:00, you know, residents could have visiting nurses or home health aides visiting them. You know, I know the ordinance is at 7:00 AM, that, you know, landscapers can be out and about through the city in the summer months. So I think 8:00 AM is a little, that's a little much. I understand we're trying to limit people from parking and going to work, but I think that could have unintended consequences. So I, I think I would be opposed to 10:00 to 8:00 AM.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to have to agree with my fellow counselor here. And I apologize, but I think, you know, I guess there's wild parties at the Visconti house way past 10 o'clock. And, you know, would hate to have those people get ticketed.
That's one of the reasons I filed this.
With all sincerity, I, I think 10 o'clock is a little early, and I think 12 o'clock is a, is still a good time. And, and willing to work with the 7 o'clock if that goes through. So, thank you. Just my opinion.
Thank you. Any other councils? A couple of points. Certainly, I, I hope that the traffic commission, in whatever shape or form, does continue to review their, their policy. But I, I, I like to see some more consistency. Like, this, even though this has been two years in, this is still somewhat new to people. So I think changing it would become a little bit more confusing. Certainly, like Counselor Visconti, you know, we have people over, we have company, and it's not a lot of parking on our street. So I would definitely be concerned with friends coming over and staying past 10:00 PM. Certainly not after midnight, because that's the haunting hour. But, but, you know, they could get ticketed. And that wouldn't be very nice. It wouldn't be very hospitable. The only other thing I'll say, well, Zach and his team do a fantastic job. We've offered, we've, we've even voted to add positions overnight. I'm not sure why they're changing their times, if it doesn't coincide with their actual hours of enforcement. That doesn't make sense. And again, I'm sure there's a good explanation. But we've offered, I said, hire another one, hire two more if you need. Because ultimately, they pay for themselves in their revolving fund when it comes to what their, their work is. So if there's a problem with overnight staffing, then they should put in for another employee on the next budget session. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. During the, the budget hearings, I was informed that they had a position cut. They had one of their overnight clerks cut. And, you know, we're trying to, I guess we're trying to keep accountability all around the city. And this is one of the reasons I brought it here, because you guys have made very good points about parties. I know that, you know, in some of the, the areas of the city where it's 24-hour enforcement, all they have to do is make a phone call or send an email. And the parking department grants leeway to those people. I'm not saying that you want to have to do that every single weekend, especially, you know, the Visconti parties and the Keefe parties. But, you know, if there is a little bit of wiggle room, I mean, we could do something in the morning, maybe, maybe go to 11 to 7 instead of 10 to 8. This is, again, one of the reasons I filed this, is so we can have a discussion, you know, because I'm just, I'm just one person, so.
Well, I would be in favor, I guess, referring it to the traffic commission to review, but not, certainly not specifically in favor of it all. On the, on the motion, councils? All in favor? Okay.
So what are we voting on?
We're just.
Can we amend the motion to send it to the traffic commission? Otherwise, you know, we.
Well, I'm not, I'm not quite sure we have a consensus, so.
We could, we could honestly place this on file, because I was going to file separately with the input of my, the counselors, honestly. So that's, that would be my, my, and.
That's fair. Thank you, Counselor. Place them file.
And late communication from the city solicitor relative to a partial response to council orders 22246 and 22299 concerning Police Department matters.
Place them file? Okay. Convene, motion to convene? Have a good night. Thank you.